Nineteen city council meeting. And the first item of business would be the roll call.
Bartlet.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Boersma.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Mijoski.
Here.
Caravello.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Durantik.
Here.
And Haley is absent and excused for the moment.
Okay, thank you. And are there any communications tonight from council members? Other person, Durantik?
Yeah, just a heads up, next time Springstead will be here. And we get to vote on our borrowing. It will come to finance first and then directly to council afterwards. Just to give you a heads up that that is coming down the pike.
Okay, any other communications for council members? I have one communication. The much anticipated B ordinance is about ready for primetime. There's going to be a public hearing, I believe it's April 8th, does that sound right?
Correct, yep.
At the planning commission meeting. So anybody that's interested in talking about the proposed B ordinance is certainly welcome to attend. And that meeting will be in this room on April 8th. And typically, we start at 6 o'clock. Are there any other communications? Do you have anything, Holly?
We started in-person absentee voting for the April election this week. We started yesterday. And that goes through the end of March. The last day to vote absentee is March 29th.
That's all for communications. We do have a presentation tonight from Habitat for Humanity. It's the Rock the Block program. And Steve Hanrahan is going to come up and let us know what that entails. Welcome.
Thank you.
And you'll see there's materials in your packet, which you can gladly forward to anybody that's interested in having some work done in their house in the area that's been proposed.
Is it going to be up on the screen?
We could.
All work to get there.
All right, go ahead.
Great, thank you very much for inviting me tonight. I want to personally thank the mayor for helping get this put together and for his assistance as we're actually exploring other opportunities here in Stoughton. And a special thank you to Rodney Shield as well for his assistance reading through some of the regulations and things we have to. And try not to pander, but I'd also like to thank all of you. I know being in the public spotlight isn't always easy. And sometimes you have to make hard decisions. I'm not going to ask you to make any of those tonight, so that'll be pretty easy. First little background of myself. Steve Hanrahan, as the mayor mentioned, I've been with Habitat for about four and a half years, which in the life cycle of employees with a nonprofit such as Habitat makes me almost a veteran. Couple more years and I'll consider myself that. I did begin as the restore director of the two Madison restores and about seven months ago was promoted to chief operating officer where I'm responsible for all our construction, our family services, the restores advocacy and all the daily business operations. I do live in Sun Prairie. My wife and I are going on 35 years there. My daughter just recently moved to Sun Prairie, excuse me, to Stoughton and enjoys it immensely. She's still trying to show me around a little bit. I attended UW here in Madison after growing up in Minneapolis. But I assure you, being in Viking country, that I was never allowed to become a Minnesota Viking fan because both my parents are from Green Bay, so that worked out well. And just to age myself, we were actually there before the Vikings were. Little background on Habitat, and then I'll get into the Rock the Block. We are an affiliate of Habitat for Humanity International. There's about 1,200 of those in the United States. In Wisconsin, we're organized primarily by county. And our official name is Habitat for Humanity Dane County. So we operate within the county. We're on about our 31st year in operation. We've built about 285 homes during the past 30-some years. Our homeowners pay about $750,000 of property tax each year. They've become valuable parts of society here. We do operate two restores in Madison. And their whole intention is to provide some operating capital, of which they do about $500,000 a year towards our mission. We fundraise locally. And the neat part about that is that that's where we invest our fundraising as well. So things are done locally. We are certified as a community investment financial institution, which is a federal government certification that's, that we have because we work with moderate to low-income families. I know a lot of you have seen pictures or you know of Habitat from the building side where you see hard hats and hammers and nails and all that stuff flying around. And that is what we do. But I wanted to share with you what our model is so that we can take from that and get to our Rock the Block. We acquire land as an entity. We then construct the homes with staff and volunteer hours and some in-kind contributions. But we do use subcontractors and we buy an awful lot of lumber. So we are a developer, if you would, in that regard. We recruit families in the areas that we're building to put into the houses that we build. We then qualify those families based primarily on income. They have to be within 30% to 60% of the area median income. So we're not dealing with low 0% to 30% or the 60% to 100% area. We're in the middle, 30% to 60% of AMI, as we call it.
Is that, excuse me, is that the local being Stoughton or versus Dane County? Are you qualifying them for, are they falling within the Dane?
Stoughton is within what we refer to as the area. So it's the area median income.
Okay, so it's the Dane County area?
Yes, correct. Our operating area. Great question, but I, yeah, no, it's not specific to each individual community. And then, of course, one of the other quality or qualification factors is their ability to make the mortgage payments, which we all have. Each family puts in about 325 to 350 hours of sweat equity building either their home or someone nearby. They have a little bit of skin, as we call it in the game. They also, and this is key, have to attend mandatory financial and homeownership courses. So we teach them how to budget, teach them how to monitor their finances and how to take care of their house. One thing most people don't know, our families also make a down payment. Once the house is complete, we have it appraised independently, just like you would if you were going to sell your home. Our then selling price to the homeowner is based on that appraisal. However, the key to the model is we limit the payments that our families make to approximately 25% of their income. If that doesn't cover the cost of the mortgage over 30 years, which it usually doesn't, we then carry a silent second mortgage behind a few others to make it work for that family. If they do sell their home in that period, we would then recover that, those funds, zero interest. We don't collect interest on that as well. So that's our model. That's how we are allowed to, or able to put folks in these homes. The 25% limit is very similar to what we would normally see in a conventional mortgage. Principal, interest, taxes and insurance, all included in the payment. So you can see that the day one when we start, we know what the taxes are and as taxes increase, insurance increases, their payments are going to obviously have to increase over time. But a lot of times their income does as well. We then serve as a bank over the course of the mortgage. We collect the mortgage payments. We pay taxes, just like your banks do if you escrow with them. We pay the insurance. So we not only build, not only find, educate and qualify families, but then we serve as their bank as we go forward. Rock the Block is part of our home repair program. We've found that it's important to also serve as many families as we can. And one of the ways we can do that is through our home repair, which is not, you know, putting a family into a new home, but trying to increase the number of families that we serve by offering our services. Again, trying to meet that same income group. But for Rock the Block, it's just a little bit different because we don't need to qualify folks for that. We're trying to improve neighborhoods, not just build houses. For this Rock the Block, it's not quite on this screen here, but we partnered with Alliant Energy, which serves your residents here in Stoughton. And what we're going to do is some external home repairs and landscaping. Very basic, one-day type projects. We're looking for six to 10 homes in the neighborhood that we spelled out on one of these printouts that you have. It's on the east side of the city, south of Main Street, in an area that we've actually built a number of Habitat homes in the past. So we're kind of, I'm not personally familiar with it, but we're familiar with the area. It's going to be on Friday, April 26th. I'm thinking that we haven't, we're not filled yet. And I think it's primarily because we still have a ton of snow out there and maybe this week will help us. As soon as the snow melts, people might start thinking spring, might start thinking, you know, we could use a little bit of maintenance on our fence, maybe a little landscaping help and whatever. It does cost the homeowner $25, but Alliant Energy is covering the cost of the rest of the, whatever cost we have in that regard. So I'm here tonight to ask you to spread the word about that. We have the information. We've flyer'd the neighborhood. We have a press release that went to your newspapers. We've sent postcards to all the residences in that identified neighborhood. And we'll probably do one more round of that next week after, as I said, after the snow melts. If I could, I just want to spend a minute talking about our housing crisis. I know that you probably all are very interested in affordable housing. It means something different to almost everybody. But the real crisis out there is that rents and the cost of homeownership is rising much faster than wages are keeping up. So every year, we reduce that, that number of folks that can afford to live in housing, no matter if it's rental or not. There's actually 19 million US households, 19 million, that pay more than 50% of their income in housing. And you guys know that conventional mortgages, you get over the 26%, 27%, and you have to explain yourself pretty extensively to the bankers. So these people are paying 50%, which means they don't have the option of choosing to save money for college or whatever. They actually choose between shelter and education, shelter and sometimes food, shelter and healthcare, and sometimes reliable transportation. Couple of facts for you. In Dane County, last year, only 8.6% of the homes listed for sale, not talking about just new, but homes listed for sale, only 8.6% were under $200,000. Median price was approximately $300,000. I can tell you that we can't afford to put people in $300,000 homes. It doesn't work economically for us. So we're looking at bringing that number down. Vacancy rates for rentals, where you're seeing probably a lot of pressure, maybe in your planning commissioner or in this room as well, wanting to build multi-family units. It's even difficult for them to build those without a lot of federal funding to provide affordable rents. Vacancy rates are at 3%. A healthy rate would be closer to 5%. So there's a shortage, there's no question about it. Our homes increased last year 6.5% over the year before. That means our appraisals went up that much. I don't know how many of you got a 6.5% raise, but most people didn't. So we, just in one year, we've seen that kick up. Our biggest problem, we can control some of our costs. We're very fortunate to have volunteers that come out and help us build. Land is our biggest issue. As you guys know, there's not much in Madison. And you get outside the area and there tends to be a little bit more, but it is really going up in price. So we're trying to talk with as many communities as we can about our needs. And if there's anything you could do to help us, it would be the known issues of keeping land costs down. What are we going to do as Habitat in the future? Well, we're developing in Pittsburgh, the east side of Madison and Sun Prairie right now. We have enough land to continue that for two to three years. We do build about 15 homes a year. We have a large project that is going to be made known to the public in probably a month or so in Sun Prairie that's going to give us the ability to put about eight houses in there for probably six years after the two years I'm talking about. So we have a lot of property in Sun Prairie. We need to expand our home repair program. And some of the folks that we're hoping that we can contact with here may have more significant repair issues. They may qualify for our home repair program, which is pretty much the same kind of a model. They qualify. We provide them with a very, very low or zero interest loan and we go in and do the home repair. And then they pay overtime to get that done. We are planning to acquire land in Stoughton. We're currently working on a letter of intent with a seller and doing our due diligence with the help of the mayor and Rodney, as I said, waiting through some of that. And we hope to be able to build between six and eight homes here, starting probably in a year and a half or two years. Our objective is simple. We're trying to serve more families and build stronger communities. Habitat's been known to build the structures. And now we have to take that knowledge and our experience to build more communities. That's what we're trying to do. So how can you help us? Well, I encourage you to visit our website to get more information. I can't give you enough in 10 minutes. You can sign up for our newsletters. If you get too many of them, unsubscribe for some of them. There's all kinds of them that you can get. You can volunteer to help us. We're always looking for volunteers. Our restores have about 180 volunteers that actually work four-hour shifts. And most of them work four hours on the same day at either store every week. So we have, they're called our regular volunteers. But we also have folks that just step up and volunteer. And you can consider Habitat when you're talking about developments in your community. I know we get painted with the same brush as most of the developers because we are a developer, but we have different needs and we try to serve a different clientele. So maybe there's a way to help us in that regard. So I want to thank you. And if I have time, questions, anybody? Have any?
Go ahead, other person, Riley.
Thank you. Hey, thanks for being here first. It's really valuable information. I'm curious, what, if anything, the city of Sun Prairie was able to do for Habitat to make whatever property you've acquired more affordable? Were they involved at all in subsidizing in some fashion or what were they able to do for you?
That's a great question. And the answer is we're still in the works. We're developing our concept plan. It's basically finalized. They've been very receptive to what we would like to do. There's some infrastructure expenses that we are hoping they can help us with. But it would be a little bit premature for me to suggest that they're stepping up to the plate and taking care of that. They've talked about some of the impact fees possibly being on the table, so we can talk about that. We also may have a little bit of a land swap where they might have a need for some of the land that we currently own for their use. So that might enter into the equation. Rezoning, we're certainly, they're open to it. So that's, we have to get it rezoned or we're not going to be able to develop it. But we've invested quite a bit in the land and the development of the project up to this particular point. And we hope to have concept approval probably within 60 days. And then there'll be more info out there that we'd be happy to go back and share it with you.
Thank you.
Other person, O'Connor?
Yes, thank you. You indicated that you're looking for affordable housing. Where do you peg housing prices and rent prices as being affordable?
Well, again, that's almost like talking about workforce housing. You know, what's the definition of that? I'm not trying to dodge your question. Our houses have appraised in certain areas at about $170,000 for last year. So that's our point. We need property to come in, you know, between $40,000 and $50,000 at the most per lot to make that happen. But we have had success with some properties up to $200,000. But again, that requires the homeowner to be closer to that 60% of AMI than the 30%.
And what do you think rent would be at an apartment?
We don't, unfortunately, I don't personally know a lot about the rental. I do know that on the east and west coast, the housing crisis is a little different than here. They've, in the Bay Area and San Francisco as an example, they don't even have enough structures to put people in. Here, there's probably enough structures, but the rents are just a little bit higher than a lot of people can afford.
And you build only on vacant land or do you deconstruct?
We do not demolish and then rebuild. We haven't gotten into that at all. There's some infill lots that we've done in Madison and we've looked at some out here in Stoughton.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Go ahead, Matt.
So I was.
Rodney, right here.
Yeah, hi. Thank you for your presentation. I was on an affordable housing tour a couple of weeks ago. And we visited the Smith's Crossing Development in Sun Prairie and the Grandview Commons on the east side of Madison. And the purpose of those visits was to highlight the lot layout with smaller lots, alley-fed, you know, lots. And basically, what we learned was that the infrastructure cost of those lots can be brought down as a result of both the size being smaller and a more efficient layout of sewer and water and streets and so on. Is that kind of a build-out, does that offer enough cost savings to make those kinds of lots, you know, affordable for projects that you guys do? Or are those still not, you know, within your reach in terms of, I think you said you needed a, like a $50,000 lot size? And I take it you mean by that an improved lot, ready to build?
Correct.
Yeah. Do you happen to know, like, whether those, whether those lots that are, that I don't know if you're even familiar with those developments?
Yeah.
But are those in the target for you guys or are those still not even in your target?
That's a great question. And the answer is yes.
They are in your target?
Yes.
Okay.
We are bordering in Sun Prairie in the area that we're going to develop against an alley-built neighborhood. So that would help. The problem we have with that, and it's the one that I'm sure that Rodney is more than familiar with, but anytime we're going to deal with a common alley or something, we're going to have to make sure we have a strong homeowners association that's going to extend beyond our involvement with the actual construction. Makes it just a little more difficult, not impossible, but.
Although in Madison, they're taking responsibility for the alleys.
Yeah. If you can find us a place to build five or six homes in Madison, please let me know. Because it's really tough. They have, we're finishing up in Pittsburgh that kind of borders on some property in the allied area in Madison. And we deal with Madison once a year where they actually give us a property after they've tried to sell it for a year or so. But, yeah, we're, we much prefer to not have them alley-loaded, but we can deal with it. And those are the kind of things you guys can help with. Because if that was something that the planners could help us bring to you and you'd say, sure, we could bless that, that's absolutely something we can do. Duplexes, townhouses, all those are on the table. We have to find a way to solve the issue that we have. And if it's cutting the cost by doing some of those things, that's certainly what we're going to do. Great question.
Other person, Boersma.
Thank you, yeah. Thank us again for coming.
My pleasure.
The, I work with Habitat through first-time homebuyers. The concern that I have, can you tell us if it's pretty standard from city to city? The zoning, the rezoning and the fees, like for parks and that kind of thing, is that pretty standard throughout the county? Or is that, is that by municipality very different? And how does, how does Stoughton rank in that?
I'll try to be non-political in my answer.
Okay.
They're all different. There's no question about that. Some are more difficult than others. I won't mention the name, but it starts with an F. They're very difficult to get beyond. They're getting better. I don't believe there's any big difference in Stoughton than generally around. The problem is waiving of those fees is either okay, it's on the table, or it's never okay. And that's where we'd like to get a little bit of leeway, you know, like.
The primary fees that need to be waived are parks?
Yep, that's one of them, sure. Any of the soft costs that go into construction would help us overcome the difficulties that we have. I'm hoping that we can partner with the commercial developers somehow and you could figure out a way, and I'm still learning some of this, but is there a way to incent them to work with us so we can bring affordable housing to the community and they can still build the rest of the development? And as I said, I'm more than willing to admit, I don't have that exact answer yet. But I'm hoping by collaborating with commercial developers and community or people like yourselves and the current regulations that we can get there. Smaller lot sizes unfortunately has become almost a non-starter in some places because people don't want to talk about density anymore. They want to avoid that. But we're talking about homeownership. We're not talking about trying to stack four-level, you know, apartment complexes. And one, for what it's worth, over 90% of our 280-some homeowners are actually still in their homes, the ones that we built. So they're long-term neighbors, if you will. They're not in there for the short haul and then moving out. But we need some cooperation of minds that can come up with some ways that we can work together. We're pretty good at waiting through the federal assistance programs that are out there in the city and county. We do use those funds to help our homeowners with down payment assistance and bringing the initial cost down. But anything we could do to reduce the initial cost of getting started with land would be, in construction would be helpful.
Other person, Durantik.
Yes, thank you again. And I just want to make a comment to the rest of you. When you do your estate planning, like my husband and I did recently, make sure that you include Habitat for Humanity in your estate planning. It's always nice to get a, have kind of, once you leave the planet, that you can continue to do something good for someone else. So, but thank you for all the work that you do.
That's a great commercial. Thank you very much. I couldn't have done that myself. That was great.
Other person, Johnson?
Hi, thank you. I've got a question. I know you're into the building. My partner has done work with, on Habitat and he's redone like a building that's been on, that was on fire. And I was interested in if you would be taking homes that have gone into foreclosure and were available and then going in and re-tweaking them rather than starting? Because we do have homes that hit the foreclosure things that I'm interested in coming in in neighborhoods that have already been established and tweaking some of these houses that need some TLC. Now, does Habitat ever do that?
Another great question, yes. We don't specifically look for the foreclosures in a particular market, but we do rehabs, as we call them. Where there might be an opportunity to get a property at a reasonable price and go in and rehab it and then put a family in it. We use the same criteria for our families, but we have to look at the cost of the property and then what we're going to put into it. And then how does that fit into the whole equation? But yes, that is something. The only problem with those is that our efficiencies really lend themselves to building four to five homes at a time.
Okay.
And when we do what we call a one-off, it requires us to have a crew and volunteers over here while we might be able to.
Yep, okay.
Staff up over here to build a number of them at one time.
Okay.
But in certain areas to help, we certainly can do that.
Okay. And I go to Habitat all the time. I call it my happy place.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your attention and look forward to seeing you. Thanks.
All right.
Okay, we'll stay for the.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, that takes us to the public comment period. And we have two people signed up for public comment. And the first one is Steve Erdahl. And you can just come up, state your name and address. And we'd like you to limit your comments to three minutes or so.
name and address. And we'd like you to limit your comments to three minutes or less, if you could. And I think Holly has some flashcards, and she keeps time. But you've been through the routine, so you know it. Thanks for coming out.
My name is Steve Erdahl. I live at 209 Ashbury Lane. I'm here to voice my objection to the zoning change in Eastwood Estates. I've lot 14 from single-family residential to two-family residential. When I bought my house in 2002, I received a declaration of covenants from the title insurance company. By buying this property, I agreed to the covenants. I've given each council member and the mayor a copy of the covenants. I've highlighted, highlighted three items in the covenants that I understood at the time of purchase. Number one, lot 14 is zoned single-family. Number two, to change the terms of the covenants, you would have to get permission from a majority of the lot owners. Number three, this covenant was signed October 1995 and is good for 25 years. This covenant is still in effect. This covenant's influenced my decision to buy my house. I live on Eastwood Estate, in, in Eastwood Estates. I live on Ashbury Lane. I know what's best for my neighborhood. The zoning change is not needed. I'm asking for your no vote here tonight.
Thank you.
And then the next person that's registered to speak is Kelly LaPointe.
Good evening. I am Kelly LaPointe, Events and Visitor Services Manager at the Stoughton Chamber. Laura Trotter, the Executive Director of the Chamber, could not be here tonight, but she asked me to read the following on her behalf. The Chamber appreciates the work that the Public Safety Commission has done to address the parking concerns of the downtown business owners. You will see two ordinances tonight about parking downtown from Public Safety. Everyone seems to agree that having the extended hour stalls in our municipal lots have helped to free up spaces on Main Street, but some downtown businesses owners say that the extended hour stalls in our municipal lots are all taken by residents and business owners. The ordinances before you tonight add three-hour spots to some stalls in municipal lots and more 48-hour stalls in municipal lots. This will ease the situation some. The Chamber hopes you will look favorably on these two ordinances. However, some of the business owners have let the Chamber know that the current two-hour parking restrictions on Main Street are penalizing their customers. These customers are looking to shop, eat lunch, and stroll in downtown, but two hours are not enough time. So in addition to the ordinances in front of you tonight, we hope that you could be, we hope that more could be done with the parking stalls on Main Street. A three- or four, or four-hour parking time restriction could help shoppers spend more time downtown while still detracting residents or business owners from taking the stall on Main Street itself. Thank you for consideration. On another note, I will be here for any questions about the special event license for Sennamai that you have before you as well tonight. So, thanks.
Thank you.
And the next item is our consent agenda. Consent agenda is basically a mini agenda of items that we vote on routinely that typically don't really need much discussion. So we put it on the consent agenda for the sake of efficiency.
So moved.
There's a motion by Duransek.
Second.
A second by Alder Person Reeves. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries. Old Business, Ordinance Seven of 2019 is a second reading from the Planning Commission. Alder Person Bartlett.
Plan Commission Ordinance Seven of 2019, in ordinance amending the zoning classification at 117 Ashbury Lane in the city of Stoughton, Wisconsin. And Plan Commission recommended approval. I move to approve.
Second. Uh, motion by Bartlett, and a second by Johnson. Alder Person Bartlett.
Yes, this is the one Mr. Erdahl just spoke about, and came to Plan Commission as well. We had a public hearing. And as a planning commissioner, I could come up with no other reasons to deny the request. It fits in with the character of the neighborhood. There's already many multi-residential houses, even the adjacent properties north and south of this one. So I didn't have that as a reason. The covenants, I didn't really take those into too much thought. Is there not a city-created document, and it's not enforced by the city? There are other options to enforce the covenants if the landowners seek to pursue that. So I didn't really look at that too much. And so you also brought up some water issues from another property at the time, which I couldn't hold this one accountable for another property development that had happened. Uh, water issues need to be addressed if they don't get fixed with the landscaping once it's in here in the spring and summer, but that's another issue. Then as a, as an Alder Person, I also thought, we've had many discussions about affordable housing in the city, and this is one way to get a little more affordable housing. It would only be a couple properties, but it's gonna be much more reasonable than the $300,000 to $500,000 houses being built around town. So it'd be a good starter property for a small family, or a young professional, or someone starting out. Uh, we need more housing. We've all talked about housing stock around the community, so I thought it'd be good there. We've also talked a lot about good infill projects, and I think this would be a good infill project. This lot has been open for a long time, so I think it would fit that, fit that need. So I'm gonna support it and recommend others do as well. Thanks.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Alder Person Borisman.
Uh, my main concern about this ordinance change is, is that the covenants, when they were originally put together, talked about the fact that there would be certain restrictions on building, and it seems like a, a number of the people who build homes in that area kind of violated their own covenants. That, that covenant, maybe through the neglect of the association that, that didn't hold their foot to the fire in, in terms of the covenants. But if, if there's a covenant, it seems to me that, that the property owner who wants to buy and purchase that property should have, should be able to look at the covenant and, and make a purchase based on the covenant that is read, even though the, the property owners may have either intentionally or unintentionally violated the covenant. So I, that's, that's my main concern with this particular ordinance zoning change. It just doesn't seem fair for everyone, including Ms. Erdahl.
Alder Person Duransek.
Yeah, I just put myself in this individual's place. I mean, if I purchased a home and there were restricted covenants, and it was laid out pretty clearly, you know, what was going to be single-family, what was going to be duplex, what was going to be multifamily, and I make a decision, then I just expect that to be honored, you know, because I based my decision on that. And, and I kind of feel that if we do make this change, knowing what the covenants are, um, you know, it's kind of like it can happen to any of us then. Um, you know, I know that, you know, the arguments put forward were good, but building a home and investing in a home is a pretty major investment for each of us. And so I'm going to vote against this, because I just don't feel comfortable knowing what I know about the covenants.
Alder Person Hirsch.
I have a question for the attorney. Are, are covenants, neighborhood covenants binding other than just in the neighborhood? They're not really, are there guidance for the city? I mean, how does that play in to the city's responsibility?
Uh, in my view, the, the covenants have nothing to do with, the city has no responsibility for the covenants. The city doesn't have any authority to enforce them. City has no responsibility to enforce them. And if the city approves a zoning change, it has no impact on the covenants. The covenants still, if, if they're enforceable before you approve a zoning change, they're enforceable after, but it's a private matter. That's an entirely private matter. So the city's decision needs to be a public policy-based decision, not, not a decision about whether to enforce private covenants or not, or at least you're not legally required to, to view it that way. Um, so they're not, that, that's my take on it, yeah.
So a follow-up question. With that, did that Eastwood Estates have, do you know, Matt, I guess this goes to the Alder Person Bartlett. Do you know whether the Eastwood Estates actually had a meeting of everybody in there to talk about the change? Did anybody come to a public meeting?
Only Mr. Erdahl showed up to the public meeting. There was no indication of any other comments, one way or the other, from other neighbors. I have not heard anything. And I don't know what they meant.
I would add, this is the first time I've seen this document. It wasn't presented at the public hearing or at the planning commission meeting.
Okay. And so this covenant is only good, it said 25 years, which would be 2020. Okay. So, um, I'm, I'm just concerned that it seems like unfortunately, the majority of the people in Eastwood Estates, you know, are not concerned about the covenants being broken. I, I really feel bad that somebody buys a house and property and puts it on thinking that it's safe, and then things change. But I also look at the map, and it's, this lot is an island surrounded by duplexes. And so I, I, it's, I don't know if you're gonna get a single-family person to actually build on that lot when it's surrounded. So I guess because we're looking for more people and for the housing, I think I'm gonna side with Alder Person Bartlett to try to get something in there that we can actually work. I mean, this lot's been vacant for a long time, and nobody's gonna build there, so.
Alder Person Riley, and then Caravella.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd note a couple of things. One, uh, the covenants, I agree accounts, of course, completely. They're, they're not a matter that the city can enforce at all. The city doesn't have any responsibility to enforce them. I would note that, in fact, the covenants are gonna run basically in perpetuity, given this document, because they self-extend for five years until terminated by a majority of the homeowners. So, so they will continue on. Um, also, you know, you see, when you're doing real estate, you see problems with this type of document, because the developer basically just walks away and doesn't do a damn thing. Excuse my French. Um, you know, they just, they, they don't enforce them. And a person who buys in that, within this neighborhood, thinks that there might be some enforceability, but the homeowners may not even be aware of these. Um, there may not be a functioning architectural control committee that somebody can work with, that Mr. Erdahl could go to and say, hey, um, you know what, I, I oppose this. Let's have a vote of the majority of the homeowners. Where's the architectural control committee? I'd be willing to bet it doesn't exist. Um, so I guess that's something, again, with all that in mind, that's something I kind of take into account here as well. I kind of think about, um, with regard to this request from Mr. Erdahl, as a matter of equity and fairness, acknowledging full well that one, more housing, better. Two, uh, the covenants are not our responsibility. But that's just something that roils me a bit, I have to say, when you run into a situation like this. So I'm, that's, that's my two cents.
Oh, it's a two flat. Alder Person Caravella.
It's a two flat.
Uh, I guess I'm of a similar mind as Alders, Duransek, and Riley. Um, as far as the covenant not being something that I guess we're legally, I mean, it's a legal binding document that Tim said, you know, goes into perpetuity after its expiration of 25 years. It, it's automatically extends for successive periods of five years until somebody takes some action to terminate it. Just seems like there's, it looks like there's a total of 27 lots out there that each have a vote in what gets built, or if these covenants are adhered to or not. So in, in fairness, it seems like the developer, I'm guessing, maybe should have to go to each of those. Whoever wants to, uh, you know, deviate from this covenant should probably have to go to everybody there and get their feelings about it, or see how they vote on it.
Alder Person Borisman.
Um, yeah, and thank you, Your Honor. I just have one other background issue, and that is that when a house is built, um, the, it's my understanding that a property owner goes to the city and gets a, gets a building permit to build a certain kind of house. Um, and I wonder, I just wonder what happened when, when the house, when the building permit goes to, uh, when, when the covenant says one thing, and then a building permit on some of these houses where it was granted to, to build a multifamily rather than a single-family, as per the covenant. I, I just wonder, you know, that whole process of getting that permit and what happened in the past.
We don't even review them. Just as the city attorney indicated, the city is not, it's not an enforceable document for the city to, we make the property owners aware that covenants may apply, whether they take out a fence permit or anything, but we're not reviewing the covenants to see if it's complicit with their request. We have to comply with the zoning regulations and the ordinances, and that's what we do. Um, we don't focus on what the covenants may or may not say.
Okay. Um, I think the city attorney wanted to add something, and then I saw Alder Person Reeves, Johnson, and then Haley. Yeah, so I, my recommendation under these circumstances is to ignore the covenants, and to make a public policy zoning decision like you would if the covenants didn't exist. Okay? This, that, that's your role. If, if the person who owns that lot wants to build a, a duplex there, and they've got your approval on the zoning, they still have to deal with these. They, and, and for all I know, they already have dealt with them, and they've made a determination that they can build a duplex there for some reason that we're completely unaware of. I don't know. Um, but they still, they either have to satisfy themselves that they have a right to build notwithstanding these covenants, or they have to take the risk that they're gonna face a legal problem down the road. So again, your action on the zoning has no effect on these covenants whatsoever. And if a person who lives in that neighborhood believes these are enforceable covenants, they're private, they have a private right to enforce them. And so that's how I recommend cities and villages approach these. We just, these are not our issue. Our issue is the public policy zoning question, and the private matters should be left to the private parties. So Alder Person Reeves was next.
Well, I, I think the question was answered. I just wanted some clarity, because I'm with a lot of you, that it just seems very uncomfortable. It seems just disrespectful that this, you know, happens to people that, I mean, when you, when you go to get a mortgage and you're handed these official papers, and then you find out, well, it's, you know, it's really your job to make sure that this all happens, folks, and you gotta do all the homework, and I'm walking away and I have my money. So it's very frustrating, but, and the question I had was, and I think you answered it, we don't even know that these exist from a city standpoint, correct? So, I mean, we don't, this is a private document.
I'm not suggesting we don't know they exist.
We don't, we don't know if they're still.
Right.
In, in effect. I mean, there could have been action taken that we're completely unaware of, maybe that, that has some bearing on that.
Yeah. And I just wanted that clarity, because it's not as though we keep a file of these.
Do not.
It is, this is a homeowner's.
Correct.
Deal, essentially.
We don't keep a record of them.
Okay. That was what I needed clarity on.
So I had Alder Person Johnson, then Haley, and then Johnson? No, you're good? All right.
My question is, did the developer already buy the lot?
I don't know the answer to that.
Um, this is my constituent, and you know how I always go with the developer and my constituent. My constituent is first. And if I had somebody that was gonna build a, a duplex beside my house when I, whatever reason, covenant, city, or whatever, I just, there was, Matt made a comment that he doesn't see any reason to change it. I, I mean, to not change it. I don't see any reason to change it. Why aren't we following our constituent? We have a developer coming in to come make money and not worried about the gelling of the, the area. And I'm gonna back up Steve on this. It just makes me irate again that the developer comes in and expects whatever they expect before doing their due diligence. If he wants to buy, to build a duplex, well, damn well, get a lot that has a duplex that could go, to go on it. So, there, I'm done.
Okay. Alder Person Haley.
Um, I was wondering whether, if we were to rezon this for duplex, um, and it was somehow blocked through the mechanisms of the covenant, whether it would have to then be rezoned back to a single-family for a house to go up on there?
Great question. The answer is no. Single-family house can be built in the zoning that's being proposed.
Okay. Okay. Um, were you okay?
Aye.
All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments on this? All right, we're ready to take a vote.
I guess we're gonna end up doing a roll call. Do you want to just start with that? Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Riley.
No.
Boersma.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Reeves.
No.
Mieski.
No.
Caravello.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
O'Connor.
No.
Duransek.
No.
Bartlett.
Aye.
That motion fails on a vote of three to nine.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to the next item. Ordinance eight of 2019 comes from the planning commission. Alder Person Bartlett.
Yes, bringing forth ordinance eight of 2019, repealing zoning code section 78 dash 205, paragraph 10 of the Stoughton Municipal Code. Planning Commission recommends approval and a move to approve.
Second. I didn't catch the second, did you, Holly?
O'Connor.
O'Connor, okay.
He's the good Irishman over there.
Give Mr. O'Connor some credit, put him in the box score tonight. Alder Person Bartlett, go ahead.
This is another one trying to clean up some of the zoning ordinances. Zoning Director Shields has found this and shows that it's kind of redundant. They had no more than one non-residential land use shall be permitted in any building unless a conditional use permit was approved, but there's already zoning ordinances that require different uses for these buildings. So we felt it was redundant to keep this in there and Director Shields is my dad hanger.
I can give you a prime example. A commercial building might be a multi-tenant building under the existing regulations. If one office was gonna be in that multi-tenant building and a retail tenant was gonna be in the other side of that retail or that building, that would have required an additional conditional use permit. Both uses are permitted outright in the district, but under the current regulations, because they're both in the same facility, it would have required a conditional use process in addition. So this would eliminate that requirement for the conditional use permit process, recognizing that both are permitted within the district outright.
Okay, any questions or comments on this one? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Item number seven is Resolution 30 of 2019. That comes from my office. I'm looking for a motion to confirm.
So moved.
I think it was Johnson. Was there a second? Was that Durant?
A second.
Denise got it. And that's the appointment of Dennis Pince to the Housing Authority. And I would just add that Dennis is also serving on seniors in need and expressed interest to serve on another, another committee. And he would be taking a former Alder Person Engelberger's spot on there. So we're excited that Dennis is willing to step up and fill in on this. They meet quarterly. Any questions about this? Alder Person Boersma.
I'm on the Housing Committee and I know Dennis and we need, we need another voting member on this committee. And so I highly recommend that we, you know, vote in favor of Dennis Pince's appointment to the Housing Authority.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries, thank you. Resolution 31 of 2019. I think this is one that Director Shields is gonna do a, kind of a presentation here.
Thank you, Mayor. Annually, we have to submit a report on our stormwater permit compliance and our practices that we go through on an annual basis to protect water quality, our stormwater quality measures. Thank you to Alder, Mr. Haley. He actually scrubbed this quite well. We had a, we had an error or an entry in here that indicated the year as opposed to the budget number that should have been placed in those fields. The corrected document was emailed out to the council members this morning. But I think it also serves as an opportunity to remind the council that we actually do a number of activities, not all specific within the city, but through our collaborative projects and partners that we are members of. We belong to a group called Mam Swap, which is a Madison area stormwater group that actually does a fair amount of information education initiatives. Some of the radio ads and others that you might hear related to stormwater quality, whether it's Plant Dane or Saltwise and some of the other initiatives that we communicate on a broader basis help the city of Stoughton meet some of our expectations to communicate with the community here as well. We also participate in a group called Yehara Winds. Yehara Winds is actually a, a stormwater group that actually is trying to comply with phosphorus removal standards within stormwater. And we're working on a total maximum daily load allocation, waste load allocation. And we're working on that project collaboratively so we can make improvements on a broader basis to improve the actual Yehara River basin for the city of Stoughton. Yehara River in this stretch actually is an impaired waterway and therefore we have particular requirements for water quality standards of our stormwater discharge. Annually, you know that we actually make stormwater improvements, not only publicly but privately. Publicly, in 2019, you'll recall that as part of our budget and part of a fairly significant grant cooperation, we're making an improvement to a bioswale in our industrial park south. That will help to improve the water quality migrating through that, that Greenway system in that location. That's offset by a fair amount of funding from the Dane County and, and DNR. So we're actually able to help accomplish minimizing some of the pollutants within our stormwater area. Couple other things that, of note, illicit discharge is something that we have to monitor and become aware of. We have outfalls that we are responsible to inspect our stormwater discharge points into the river and that's part of our, our process. Pollution prevention, stormwater system maps, those are all components of this project that we have to do on an annual basis. We've, we've been able to accomplish this. Really, we've been able to broaden the breadth of our communications because we're a party to some of these other organizations. As you recognize, the city staff is limited, but part of our project also includes our Public Works team. Our Public Works team is integral in our, our leaf collection, street sweeping initiatives and downtown maintenance. So you recognize those daily activities we get credit for as part of our modeling to improve our stormwater quality. I'm here tonight hoping that you'll endorse the submittal of the annual report. Included in the link that I provided in your email today is about 130 pages of additional information and education items that are both on our website and annual reports related to the groups we belong to. So I'd encourage you to look at that link. That link also provides you the stormwater website for the city of Stoughton. A number of additional annual reports of previous years are included in that website publication as well. So I'd certainly be open to questions if there are any, but we believe that this, this report's ready for submittal.
Any questions or comments? So we're looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Okay, I think it was Alder Person Reeves. And was there, second was?
Denise.
Sorry Denise, you're losing a step or something here.
I was really excited about this one in particular.
Yeah, stormwater is very exciting.
That's fine then, if you're really excited about it Lisa.
All right, any questions or comments on the stormwater? As you can tell, staff puts a lot of time and energy into trying to make the improvements and we appreciate that. And, and it's not just Stoughton, it's other communities that we join together. It's a, it's a joint effort, so the standards are getting to be more challenging, but we think that's a good thing.
Excellent.
Go ahead.
Hey Rodney, I got a question. You're really into this and you know, I mean, you live and breathe it. Is there a way that we can do in our times or something that you could maybe put a little snippet just of information of new and, and things, just for us to learn?
Careful for what you wish for.
Oh, well, just maybe keep it down to a paragraph, not 120 pages, that's why I laughed. Just for us to learn as a community, you know?
In, in many regards, we do. There's a number of articles, not as detailed as this, but you talk, there are a number of articles that we do put in the Tower Times that are part of our communication and message about dog waste and salting your, your property and fertilizing your property. So there's a number of things that we do try to communicate that message. Maybe a broader one that I can expand on some of these areas in a future message is appropriate.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Resolution 32 of 2019, this is the first of many from Public Safety. Alder Person Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 32 of 2019, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B, Class B retailer's license and special event license for Stoughton, to the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce for Setnamai 2019 and I would so move.
Second. Second by Alder Person Riley.
Yep, Public Safety approved 3-0 on February 27th, 2019. This is the same thing we see pretty much every year. According to the chief, we've had very few, if any, issues with this. They use best practices, so I would encourage approval.
Okay, Alder Person Boersma.
Alex, you can talk if you want.
Go ahead Sid.
I have seen some problems myself by visiting the beer tent. I, at one point saw a couple of very intoxicated people being served alcoholic beverages and I was concerned about the fencing and I was concerned about the kids in our community viewing this family event with, you know, with, I think in some ways excessive use of, of fermented beverages. And so I will be voting against this particular resolution.
Okay, any other questions or comments? One thing I wanted to make sure the council knows that AJ from Risk Management is working with the chamber to get permission to use, it'll be our property at the bank for Setnamai and then also for the Saturday's farmer's market. So they've been working together with Laura and Sylvia to get the insurance stuff in order. So just so you guys know, that's one other thing that'll be new this year. We'll actually own the property where a lot of the action takes place for Setnamai and the market. We think it'll be good for both, especially for the, the market. It'll actually open up the road again and get the traffic into the parking lot, which we think will be better and safer for everybody. I know I've received a lot of feedback the last year about the farmer's market and the road being closed and the traffic for the post office and for the bank. So we'll be making them accommodations. For Setnamai, it's pretty much gonna be business as usual there, but that is a slight change from past years. Anybody have any questions or comments about the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
I hear two no's. That motion carries. And the next one would be item number 10, which is our 33 of 2019 and that also comes from Public Safety.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 33, 2019, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to issue a six-month Class B fermented malt, excuse me, fermented malt beverage license to the Stoughton merchants. Brett Klitsky, agent located at 600 Creedham Drive and I would so move.
Second.
And this is the same thing. They've been doing this for years. Public Safety approved this 3-0 on February 27th. No issues.
No issues.
Chief has no issues, so I would encourage approval.
Any questions or comments? Alder Person Duransek.
Yes, it's too bad I'm leaving Sid because I would start to vote more with you. I really, I have a very difficult time voting for this in a neighborhood park. And I've, I've talked to some of the people on the Wellness Coalition and their efforts, you know, to help deal with alcoholism in our community. I mean, we all know that this state, you know, binge drinks too much. And when we start having family gatherings, neighborhood parks where we have alcohol freely accessible, to me, this just really undermines some people's attempt to stay dry. We really should start to become a lot more sensitive to that fact. And I am going to vote against this because I don't care if there has been problems there or not. I just feel strongly that we should not be encouraging this kind of behavior in our public parks.
Alder Person Boersma.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with Denise. I think it just goes to the issue of culture. Not, not just problems for people, but also the culture that I would love to see Stoughton have the culture of, of being, being extremely careful in terms of beverages being sold, especially with, with the problems we're having with especially juveniles and and we need, I think we need to be careful about it and so I will be voting against it as well.
Alder Person Johnson.
Hi, thank you. Last year I voted against this because it was a park. And then when I was in Public Safety, I voted for it because I know it's a moneymaker for, but, for them. But now I think I'm gonna change my vote because I'm me and I'm gonna go vote against it because I agree that it is a park situation with kids. So I'm changing my vote from, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Alder Person Hirsch.
I have a question. Is this just for the adult league or is it during all baseball?
Home talent. Home talent. They typically play on Sundays, I believe it is.
And home talent is adults?
It's adults and the families typically come out and watch the games. It's usually the parents or grandparents of the players and friends and family and it's, I mean, I live in the area, walk over there and watch a game occasionally and it's, it's pretty laid back. It's not a drunken binge or anything like that. It's just people kinda having a picnic and maybe enjoying a beer while they do it. I happen to believe that adults can drink responsibly and I would be concerned for my kids and grandkids, but I have no trouble taking my grandkids over and watching the ballgame over there.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Go ahead.
One more comment, it is a fundraiser for them, so it's something that's important to them, so.
And this group has given back tremendously to our park system through their fundraising. They've purchased a scoreboard, they maintain the field, they do a lot of great things. They take a lot of pride in their event and they certainly wouldn't do anything that they felt would jeopardize what they're trying to do there, so I, I support their efforts.
But I think we need to just go back and, and Sid said it, culture. You know, what kind of culture do we want to foster? And that's what it really comes down to is what kind of culture do we wanna foster, at least publicly? You know, having bars, having alcohol in restaurants, much more controlled. But again, this is a public facility and yes, it makes money, but at what point do we start saying no? I know that there's been all kinds of, you know, campaigns out there, just say no. But we as adults basically have to say, no, we don't wanna foster this kind of a culture anymore. We have alcoholism, we have opioid crisis. I mean, we have all of these different types of crises. We really need to think very deeply about what we foster in our culture. And to me, this just helps to foster it.
President Mieski.
I understand what Alder Duransek and Boersma are saying. However, what does the policy for the parks, the city parks right now have in regards to alcohol?
It's allowed.
There you go.
You can bring it in.
If you feel very strongly as you do, then I suggest that you take it to the appropriate committee, which is the Parks Committee, to have the policy changed. But until that point in time, we can't just say because we'll go against policy and, and not do this because we wanna change a culture. If you wanna change the culture, you have to change the policy.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this one? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Did I hear three?
Yes.
Okay. So that motion carries? Thank you. Next item eleven, Resolution thirty-four of two thousand and nineteen, also comes from Public Safety.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution thirty-four, two thousand and nineteen, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to issue a Class B fermented beverage, a malt beverage license, a Class C wine license to Cold Coast LLC, doing business as fifty-one South. That's Tricia Brown, agent located at two oh eight West Main Street, and I would so move.
Second.
This is, Public Safety met on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, voted three zero to approve this. It's a new facility on Main Street. They're looking to add to their offerings. So something, I guess, that they're here, they wish to talk about it, if you have questions.
Okay. Alder Person Johnson.
Hi. I went to the restaurant and it's got really good food. But when I was there, I was talking to the owners and they said that they're trying to get other type of businesses, and so they are new, and that they actually had people that called ahead to try to reserve someplace at an opera house evening. And then they found out that they didn't serve any beer or alcohol, and then they canceled. So that's gotta be really disheartening when you are trying to get a business going and, you know, I know what Sid's about with the alcohol and stuff, but, you know, if somebody wants to go out to dinner and have a drink in this kind of establishment, I would like not to, you know, have people vote against it and just give these people an opportunity to also serve good food and beer.
Thank you. Alder Person Boersma.
Well, frankly, I agree. I mean, if it's a private place where it's not a public facility, it's not out in public where kids are invited in to attend, and it's an establishment, I don't have a real problem with it. Still have a problem with culture issues, but on this particular one, I'll be voting in favor.
Did I see a hand on the side? Missed anybody? Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Here are none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That one carries. Okay. Thank you. Item number twelve is ordinance nine of two thousand and nineteen. Alder Person Jensen, you guys are busy, weren't you?
Yeah, thank you, sir. Ordinance nine, two thousand and nineteen, amending chapter seventy dash one eighty-five of the Stoughton Municipal Code relating to forty-eight hour parking by creating section four, five, and six. And this is for first reading.
So when we have a first reading, it typically comes back at the next meeting, but if you have any questions tonight or you're looking for some information, feel free to ask, or if anything comes up between now and the next meeting, let us know. Anything you wanna add for these? There's actually, what, two of them in a row here?
Well, there's this one and then a three-hour parking.
Okay. Anything you wanna cover on this one?
Only that it actually came as a result of number five was a request from the senior center to do something about vehicles in their lot that are, they're more than forty-eight hours at a crack. And then we, as we were doing our research, we discovered that the library lot, which we thought already had forty-eight hour parking and the other lot at South Fourth and East Main, neither one of those were included in the previous forty-eight hour ordinance, so we added those as well. So now they're all consistent.
Okay. Sounds good. Is this something that you think is gonna be kind of an ongoing monitoring, or what is the strategy here?
No, I think some of the issue with the senior lot was they were having residents park in there for extended period of time, and it wasn't allowing for parking during the day when they need the spaces. The three-hour parking is also, the next agenda item is designed to correct that as well, to ensure that those lots are available for seniors' use and so forth. So I don't anticipate there's going to be any enforcement issues with these other than what we have with the rest of the lots in the city as well.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Astral Connor.
Yeah, Greg. What is that, what is the library lot assigned for now? Is it three hours, two hours?
I believe the library lot is three.
Three hours during eight to five.
Right.
So forty-eight hours would allow apartment owners and whatnot to park in there and?
Yeah, but during the, because it's eight to five, so it would allow them on the weekends and other times to be able to park in there. What we were finding there is we had no way to enforce when there was basically abandoned vehicles in there. And without having the forty-eight hour provision, what we could just do is keep hanging citations on them for the three-hour violation. So, and we had some long-term vehicles in there that were becoming a problem.
Won't this allow long-term forty-eight hours? Won't this allow forty-eight?
No, this'll allow up to forty-eight hours, but then it can be, you know, it starts the forty-eight hour clock and then after two consecutive forty-eight hours, we can pull, or toll.
I would think that would interfere with people using the library.
Not at a forty-eight hour parking. I don't think it's gonna interfere at all. This, the library was very pleased with this, plus the enforcement, the steady enforcement of the three-hour parking in there. So they're very happy with this ordinance and the enforcement of the three-hour zone.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I do have one of the chief, so just so I can avoid a ticket. Is the, is it, you mark the tires on the three hours and that's how you do it? And can I take my, anything out of park and pull it, push it forward a little bit?
Well, usually a push forward won't take all the chalk off, so you literally gotta drive around the block and then you're safe.
Okay. Thank you.
Always looking for an angle, aren't you?
It's all about me.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one? So this will be back. Let's go to the next one, ordinance ten of two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance ten, two thousand and nineteen, amending chapter seventy dash one ninety-one of the City of Stoughton Municipal Code relating to three-hour parking by creating section, or subsection five. And this is first reading.
I think the chief kinda covered this one as well. Is there any comments on this one? Seeing none. We'll see this one in two weeks, which takes us to number fourteen, ordinance eleven of two thousand and nineteen. This is also a first reading.
Yes, ordinance eleven, two thousand and nineteen, an ordinance related to electronic smoking devices and providing tobacco products to minors. And this is first reading.
Okay. Anything you wanna talk about on this one?
I just wanted to point out one thing. I gotta call it up here on, but the, what came out of Public Safety and what is on here is slightly different. Let me find that in there. I believe it's on, yes, it's on the second page, the second paragraph in the middle there, it says, and any substance that can be used, that used to say nicotine, we changed it to substance.
Okay. And Chief, you wanna just kinda go over the reason for the change and actually for the ordinance?
Well, the change allows it to be a little more exclusive with things that we're finding in the vaping environment. There's been a lot of recent acknowledgement of some real health concerns over the vaping, especially with younger people. And the popularity of this occurring, especially in, you know, public settings and so forth. And we're trying to get at least caught up with some of the terminology that has changed over the years with vaping. And most of our ordinance previously just referenced tobacco or strictly nicotine. And there are so many other substances out there now, the flavorings and everything else. And I don't even know the entire list, but there were some real health concerns raised. And I will add that there is a similar bill pending in the legislature right now to make this state law. So, and we were fortunate that we were able to piggyback off of Attorney Dregdine's work with the Village of Oregon. They were drafting the same ordinance, and so we were able to jump on that opportunity. So I think this is needed. We have, the Stoughton Wellness Committee is already geared up to start doing some campaign to inform, you know, prevent the vaping in certain places, especially in the schools and public places. This would prevent vaping in all the same areas that we currently prevent smoking of tobacco products, so it carries on to each of those. The only other thing I would ask is maybe if you wanna consider waiving the second reading and putting us into place so we can start our campaign before the school year is out and maybe we can get some information out to the youth ahead of time before the summer. I'd make the motion to waive the rules.
Second.
There's a motion to waive the rules by Jensen, the second by Hirsch. Any conversation about waiving the rules? Takes a two-thirds vote. Hearing none, all in favor of waiving the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, which takes us to the ordinance, the motion. So somebody would make the motion to?
Motion.
Motion by Jensen.
Second.
Second by Hirsch. Any discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Could you go over the citations and penalties for violating these?
I don't have the dollar amount, but it'd be exactly the same as what a tobacco violation would be currently. I believe it's thirty dollars plus cost for the first offense or something like that, so.
Where can we find that?
That's a good question. I'm not sure if the court has the bill.
Okay.
Maybe Matt can.
Well, I mean, there's really, it's kind of a two-part question. One part is what's the range of forfeitures that our ordinances provide for? I don't have that directly in fund me, but we can get that in the code book. And then the next part, and I think this is probably what you were thinking, Greg, is what's our deposit schedule provide for? Because it's a practical matter, that's what your ticket's gonna be. And, so that is available through the municipal court.
Okay. We'll try to send that out to the full council, how's that sound? And then Alder Person Johnson, have a question?
Thank you, Your Honor. I got a question. Now, are you enforcing on, can you enforce on school grounds or is this just off school grounds?
Oh, no, we can enforce on school grounds as well. We can currently do tobacco products on school grounds.
Okay, thank you. I just was curious.
Didn't mean to cut you off, Ben. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, or was that, was it? Okay, perfect. Anybody else? All right, so then we'll try voting on this again. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Adjourned.
Second.
Motion by Boersma, second by Jensen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A little later than I thought.
Opposed? None opposed? We are adjourned.
Merci beaucoup.